Introduce overall risk to populations and structures, structures from future hazard events and restore jobs and revitalize commercial activities in the most vulnerable communities by Councilwoman Shawna Banks. Motion to introduce for public hearing on January eighth, twenty twenty five. Do we have a motion? Motion by Councilman Dunn Jr., second by Councilman Hudson, any opposed? Item's been introduced. Item two, amend the twenty twenty five current expense budget so as to increase estimated revenues in the amount of three million, two hundred ten thousand for gross receipts, business tax to restore, provide, to restore and provide additional funding for various departments and agencies funded by the general fund contingent upon passage, passage of legislative items two four oh one six oh seven and two four oh one six oh eight by the mayor president, Councilman Dunn Jr., Councilwoman Rocka. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to council.
Councilmembers, you should have received two email comments in opposition to item two.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Councilman Dunn Jr., second by Councilwoman Rocka, any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, authorizing mayor president to appropriate state funds from Act four, twenty twenty four, regular legislative session, the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for targeted services and interventions designed to address youth incarceration, community violence, public health, and neighborhood development by the mayor's office. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Jennifer Carwell, eighteen fifty-five Old Carriage Lane, and I just want to speak in support of this. I've been working with Safe, Hopeful, Healthy for the past several years, and there are a lot of things that the mayor has started trying to intervene with youth, and it's important that we keep these things going. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Good morning, I'm Lucy Pereira. I am with Line for Line, and we have been funded through Safe, Hopeful, Healthy to do some work with CBI work, and we are supporting this project because this is our passion and our focus. Thank you.
Jennifer, before you leave, is it Jennifer?
Lucy.
Lucy, can you just give them the acronym? Everybody don't know what that means.
Excuse me?
CBI, let them know what it means.
Oh, CBI, Community Violence Interruption Intervention. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm O'Neal Curtis, I'm the owner of O'Neal's Barbershop, been running it for twenty-two years, and I'm the owner of Line for Line, and also second director. Just want to thank y'all for the support, thank y'all for everything y'all do for the community.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the councilmen for their longest time to speak on this item. My name is Dr. Brown, I've been with the program from the beginning, almost five years ago. We started off with in Calhoun High School for a couple of years, and then we migrated to different schools in the community. I also saw a lot of good things happen through this program, not just with the program, the kids, but with the families that we connect. When the mayor first birthed this program, the idea was to make sure we heal families. We can give the kids all type of tools they put in their toolbox at school, but if we don't work with the parents and expect what their expectations are, we still fail in the kids. We do a lot of things with the kids, with the court, the kids, spend a lot of time with the families, how can we help them doing mentees, package when a person on probation or in the system. And I've been in jury hanging court about twelve times in the last part of four months, and they respect the program that what we do for our youth and our kids in the community, and just being a part of the MIB program, getting young men off the street in the summertime, and just getting them skills and trades and working the programs, the youth program. Again, it's a great program, I hope we continue to fund this right here, because the kids and the community very much need this guidance, and that we're giving them to Safe, Hopeful, Healthy BR. Thank y'all for y'all time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Jasuka Matthews, Director of Safe, Hopeful, Healthy. I just want to bring some clarity to this item a little bit. While it is funding many parts of the continuation of Safe, Hopeful, Healthy, it's also funding multiple community agencies in the city who do other work in the space of workforce development, community development, as well as youth development work and health disparities. So, the folks who just spoke are speaking on those funds that are going towards Safe, Hopeful, Healthy's work, but there's multiple other agencies which a lot of you are familiar with who are receiving funds from Senator Barrows' dollars. So, it's not just the Safe, Hopeful, Healthy grant, it's a community grant, so I just wanted to bring a little clarity to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Good morning, my name is Cedric Hardgrave. Well, basically, I've been doing this work for the past year, and it's very vital to the community. Me, myself, I was once a high-risk individual, so I was able to come back to the community. And the kids that I work with, they really depend on me, their mothers and fathers, like several times, I done met individuals that have fourteen and fifteen-year-old kids that's living in a one-bedroom apartment, don't want to attend school. I help them, I go buy school clothes for them, I enter them in school, I take them to what we have called a brotherhood circle, where we meet every other Monday, and counsel and mentor and everything, but the work is definitely needed in the community, and if no one else care, we genuinely care about this work. You have to really just be there in order to see what goes on in this community. If you haven't experienced this, it'll be hard for you to understand. But this is an everyday process, and the funding is definitely needed, because several times I come out my own pocket to pay for meals, pay for school clothes, things of that nature. So, I would appreciate it if we can continue this program and continue doing the work for the city of Baton Rouge.
Thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to council, Councilwoman Banks.
Good morning. So, I definitely make a motion to approve this item. One of the things as a school professional, working in alternative education, just speaking with Jasuka, I had spoken with Ms. Gurley in Ploy BR, and one of the new assignments I have as a school counselor is during the month, making sure that all our kids have jobs certifications during the summer. But one of the avenues that I have introduced to the school is that we have what's called like family team conferences, similar to what Dr. Brown said. So often, kids show up and there's no interaction with parents unless they're called to the school for a discipline matter. And I believe that from the beginning, if we engage parents through a family team conference, where we bring all the agencies associated with Safe, Hope, and Healthy to the table, that will give parents an opportunity to see what services are there, how to react, and put an accountability with their, with students' academic success, also during the summer, where they would spend all their time at school. During the first three and a half, four hours, we'd like our students to be, to do academics for old and new credits, and the afternoon be engaged at some point with one of the Safe, Hope, and Healthy programs. So, this funding is very important, and I look forward to, hopefully, my colleagues approving it, because I've built a whole model around this program for alternative schools. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, second by Councilman Dunn Jr., any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Coleman, I apologize, I told you I would take number five first, and I forgot. We'll go to item five. Authorize the mayor president to amend the award and execute-
If you don't mind, please, if you don't mind, I have number four.
We'll go to it right after five.
Why?
Because I said I would do five first.
I know.
Authorize the mayor president to amend an award and execute a sub-precipient agreement between the city of Baton Rouge, Parish of East Baton Rouge, and Louisiana Housing Corporation to support the state National Life Workforce Housing Development in downtown Baton Rouge by two million dollars in E-Rap Housing and CDBG DR funds by Councilwoman Carolyn Coleman. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer, pardon me, Jennifer Carwell. I also have been working with the homeless providers in Baton Rouge to work on dealing with our homeless issue, and one of the things that has come up is we are very deficient in affordable housing and deeply affordable housing. Deeply affordable housing would be people who are on disability checks or whatever that get nine hundred dollars a month can live in an apartment, you know, without being housing cost burden for three hundred or three hundred and fifty dollars a month. We don't have any of that. So, anything that we can do to develop more deeply affordable housing, I hope that we will work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to council, we have a motion. Motion by Councilwoman Coleman, second by Councilman Moke, any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, amend the twenty twenty-four annual operating budget for building and grounds so as to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fund balance assigned to Jewel J. Newman Community Center, generated through prior year rental revenues at the community center for building repairs and improvements in District Two by Councilwoman Banks. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to council. Councilwoman Banks.
So, this fund balance, something that I was intentional in raising the end-
Shawna, Mike.
Come at the Jewel J. Newman Community Center. I've made, anyone that goes to the center will see, it's a fifty-year-old building, and there had been no improvements in that timeline. Anyone would come to it now, will see that it has been totally refurbished through expenses that are normally taken on by the city parish, but they simply take too long. And so, through my District Two income, where most people may donate it to a nonprofit, I've expensed all of my District Two income in my general fund, as well as my Jewel J. Newman, to the upgrades over the last twelve years. So, I have a fund balance of one fifty that would expedite being able to do the roof. It's through building and grounds, which is very much responsible for turning over any buildings such as the old fire station, they have to absorb those expenses, but just to expediate that effort, I came to the table in our negotiations to donate my one, the one fifty to begin roof repairs, doors, air conditioning, plumbing, electrical, and windows to the old fire station at eleven fifty Rosenwall, so that we can begin youth programming in our community as early as this summer. Many of the programs through Brick have now been cut, and they will not be able to offer free our year-round programs. So, our goal is to subsidize that in our community where it's located in one of the highest crime areas in the Scollenville community, just our youth crime in Scollenville, as evident of not only the shooting that happened on Swan, but also there was a shooting on Morganza. And in addition to that, just yesterday, three youth under twelve stole the car keys of my center manager, and they've broken in, they've stole our Council on Agent television, and, you know, where we focus a lot on the youth and see that they're bad, I think they have too much time of their hand, I think they have a lack of exposure, and I would like to be able to be a part of remediating that. So, I ask that my colleagues approve this matter, and I make a motion to approve.
Councilman Hearst.
Hey, so, when this came up the other day, it kind of took me by storm, because I know how important the Charles R. Keller Community Center is to District Five. I also know how important the overall budget is for me to be able to make the impact that I believe that God has called me to do in the community that I serve. And so, I do have a question for Councilwoman Banks, how much money would be left over after the one fifty?
No, no amount of the full balance will be, but it will be, the entire amount is scheduled for the Building and Grounds Department, and the reason, and what the agency was asked to do, what the parish attorney asked, that it stays open to the discretion of District Two projects, which, if necessary, would include the Jewel J. Newman, just that I've taken care of those things. Also, as you know, an entire balance begins again with the new administration for both the District Two as well as the Jewel J. Newman, but luckily, I wanted to make sure that the incoming council member had, did not, had, did not, that they had an advantage I didn't have as it relates to revenues. So, for me, I put, have at least five million, five thousand dollars a month in leases that I did not, that incurred as a result of me, as well as the fact, again, that there are, will be, and this amount can only be used for building or intentions like that, but again, I have taken care of that, and I have also, they will start over, but luckily, Council-elect Kenny will not have to use those expenses for the building, but what they, he would be able to have the discretion to use towards more community programming.
Okay, so, is that, so, carryforward funds are capital expenses that are not necessarily specifically used towards a building. You, I'm gonna tell you, because that's how-
These are not carryforward funds. I've exhausted all the carryforward funds on-
But you said this is rental revenue collected.
I understand that, but these are self-generated, there's a difference.
I got you, so, but here's the deal, the way that I make the money to be able to serve the community is by rentals and leases. We do this in every community center.
Sure.
In the MLK, in the Leo Butler, Brandon has a whole medical clinic up there, and Zachary that does this. That way, we don't become a burden to the general fund-
Exactly.
-to be able to, so, if you take the money away from Anthony Kenny, and he's coming in with a plan based on previous year's rental revenues, which is what Angie and those folks use to budget and make projections for the upcoming year, the new council member elect, in my opinion, and I'm only responsive to this, is extremely handicapped when he comes into office. So, I would tell you, if Erica Green had done that to me, I would have, Judge Green said correctly, I would have been at a loss. So, and even if those funds are not used, they go into carryforward funds, which gives him the, they do, which gives him the ability to provide capital expenditures for the building, whether it be buying new laptops for programming, whether it be, I have a trailer now, because I was spending so much money on DPW for community events, and now I have a trailer where all the stuff that we have sits in the trailer, so it's the least amount of expenses to DPW in terms of overtime. But the bottom line is, I had to get creative to be able to positively serve my community as a partnership through the community center and the district, and if you take the funds away from him, then he has nothing left. And the final thing was, if this was an option, why didn't we give it to Scollenville to fix the building, when they had the issue? Because the money was there-
Wait, are you asking a question? Because I can answer that.
I'm making a statement first, I'm making a statement, but my question would be, if we knew that this was there the whole time, and we could have done this over the last ten years, which is the biggest complaint that you had with the Scollenville alumni, why didn't we come in and be a beacon of hope and light and take some of these rental revenues, and if not apply all of them, at least ten thousand or twenty thousand a year, because if this, if the intent of this center was to serve the community, then he already has a community center that's doing it, and you're taking the money away from him to be able to be creative to do what he was elected to do? So, now he has no programming money, no money to buy physical assets and other things that, if it turns, the rental revenues turn into carryforward funds, which are still a major component of renovating a community center and allowing your vision to move forward. Now, I'm speaking on his behalf, because I know how I've been able to partner through the community center in addition to make that happen, but I'm gonna give him my next five minutes, and I want him, you gotta come to this mic though, I'm gonna give him my next five minutes-
You gonna ask him a question?
Yeah, to be able to speak, and I'm just gonna say, hey, Anthony, what is your vision for your district, and what would you do with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if it was left there for you to either do capital expenditures or to be able to have operating expenses?
You can use it for operating.
But I'm talking to him.
All right, good morning, council. So, thank you, Councilman Hearst, kind of for that segue. So, one of the biggest things, especially a lot of constituents reached out to me about this item, a lot of people just want to make sure that revenue that is raised in the Jewel Newman Community Center, we're able to do projects within the Jewel Newman Community Center. Me and Councilwoman Banks are beginning to have our transition talks, and so, of course, when this item came up, you know, a lot of people were asking, it looked very vague in the ways it could be used for us, so, hopefully, Councilwoman Banks and our talks in transition, we can talk about, you know, how this hundred and fifty thousand dollars could be further mapped out to your point, but definitely for my vision, I just want to ensure the Jewel Newman Community Center have enough resources. Also, when I start in January, I'm not already to the point, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars behind in some cases, right? But overall, we just want to make sure in the community, we're not setting a dangerous precedent. I know, you know, Councilman Hearst talked about, you know, why the Scollenville alumni did not have the opportunity for this option, so I just want to make sure other organizations don't feel as if it's a biased process, and we have a clean and smooth transition with these type of allocated funds are being moved around.
So, I'm gonna take my, you can state it if you want to, we're gonna talk some more, but I will say this, I think the incoming person at the end of the year should have the opportunity to come there with the same landscape that we all had, and if he chooses to allocate those funds to wherever they want to go, then they should be at his discretion. So, my question for you is, is do you want the money, or do you not want the money?
I need as much resources as possible.
Yes, yes and no.
Yes, yes.
Substitute motion to deny, thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Moke.
Okay, so, these are, you rent out facing your community centers, and this is everyone, you rent out facing your community centers, you make a profit off of those rentals, correct? Yes or no?
We don't make a profit.
You, you, what's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So, that, I think you need to ask-
Let me, let me, let me see this.
You don't mind asking finance to explain?
You make a surplus. You have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Why don't you have finance come explain how this came about? This is money, this fund, I'm just saying, so we can all be educated.
You have, okay, you got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left over, extra. You've made that, you've stated you made it off of renting out the facilities and things like that, you took care of fixing things through the regular budget, you have this hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra. What's to say that something else might not happen at the place that the next council member may need it for something? I.e., they, with all due respect to Councilman Hearst, they need a stove or something.
You want, you're asking, you're asking-
I mean, no, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, he used, we had to extra allocate budget money to repair items in his facility. Why would we not leave that hundred and fifty thousand dollars into-
Are you asking me to answer, though?
Into this part here? That's just the way I feel it needs to be. It's in the community center, it needs to be done for items at the community center. Who is the organization that we did the CEA with? What's the correct term? What's the organization name? I don't remember offhand.
The last meeting?
Scottville Foundation?
Yeah, yeah.
We formed a CEA with them, that CEA is in effect, correct? We approved it, I don't know if it's been signed off and on everything, they are responsible for their building now. They should be responsible, that was part of the agreement, they were going to do this, this, and this with an X amount of time and so on and so forth, they were going to do fundraising, they were going to be able to do it and get it taken care of. So, therefore, why are we taking from one facility to the other and trying to repair another facility? Obviously, this hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be targeted at that fire station, according to what you stated earlier. Why just that fire station?
Are you gonna let me answer?
Yes, I am, but I'm gonna be specific in your answer, and we're not gonna drag it out for the whole rest of the time.
I'm just gonna answer you three questions.
Why are we targeting that facility to take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the community center, which I feel should be spent there, to fix this facility that we formed a CEA with someone that's supposed to take care of this?
Okay, so, the first question is about the refriger, I mean, the stove, I have replaced it, first of all, I built-
No, I don't want to know that, so, why are we targeting, why are we targeting this building?
All right, this is why. We are targeting why, because first of all, the city parish has a fiduciary responsibility to turn the building over with, in an operable position. So, whether this is approved or not-
Okay, pause right there, pa, pa, pause right there. If we're supposed to turn it over in an operable condition, fixed roof, ceilings, windows, non-boarded up and everything, why do we have a CEA in place? Why don't we take care of the facility first?
Are you gonna answer?
And if I had to talk to Buildings and Grounds, can come up here-
Are you, let me answer.
-and explain that to me.
Do you want me to answer?
Why do we have a CEA in place?
I asked, do, why are you asking, then you won't let me answer?
Where, do we have Buildings and Grounds, or attorney, or somebody can talk about the CEA? Huh? Okay.
So, wait, do you mind me answering, please? Because I know, do you really want to know?
I can do that? I'm gonna recess my time, that's-
Do you really want to know the answer or no? Are you just talking? I guess not.
Well, I may not, I may need that later.
You can't, you can't recess your time.
Okay, fine, then. While we're waiting on them, Shawna, you can go ahead and say what you gotta say, but they're going to, when they come up, they're gonna talk.
Sure. Okay, so, first of all, the Capitol area United Way building, all of it says that the city, that the Capitol area United Way for the last thirty years is responsible for the full renovation of the building. However, this, just in the last three months, we have, we have paid, given one point five million dollars to renovate the building. In the last thirty years, you can ask Joe, they have done no repairs, but yet we gave one fifty. The African-American Museum, also a city-owned building, we just renovate, we have just given them a million dollars.
Councilman, you want your extra time right now?
Even though their-
You want your extra time right now? Okay.
Even though their CEA says that they are responsible for-
Okay, Shawna, that's the end of his time. Councilman Dunn Jr.?
I'm gonna make a motion to recess the meeting, because I don't think anybody, Councilwoman Banks, Councilman Moke, or anybody should be jeopardized and not utilize their time because a department head or somebody from the administration is not here to address these items. I think when we have these items on the agenda, somebody should be here to answer these questions, and we should not lose our time to speak because they are not here. So, if we're not gonna allow members to recess their time to speak, I'm gonna make a motion to recess the meeting until somebody's here to speak to these items.
We don't have to recess the meeting, we can just wait on them.
That's fine, too.
In the meantime, can we have finance, since they are here? I mean, Brandon, 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 can, okay, I mean, Councilman, no.
Angie, if you don't mind. Angie, I'm curious, should, so, I'd love your thoughts on what's being talked about here, but my question, after your thoughts on the structure on this, if everybody's got it right and understands what's going on, that we're moving funds from the community center to building the grounds for projects in District Two, that could be, I guess, the community center or the fire station or any, anything else? Would there be a prohibition to Councilman-elect Kenny from doing this very same thing once he takes office?
It's my understanding it's up to the governing body decides how the money is spent. I mean, that's why it's coming before you, because even if it was to be spent in Jewel J. Newman Community Center, it still would need to come before you, because it's signed in a fund balance account, it's not assigned in an appropriation like what the budget items have that y'all approve. So, anything in a fund balance account has to come before the Metro Council for approval. This has been a longstanding policy, that any revenues collected within the community centers, overcollected of what's been budgeted, is assigned within a fund balance, so that they can use it to expand for building repairs, for expansion of like a summer program. It cannot be used for operational cost, but it can be used for a one-time expansion cost, like a senior event, a community fair, something that would, you know, at the center that would be a one-time use. Capital equipment, it can be used for that, it can be used for repairs of the, of the building repairs, any one-time cost it can be utilized for. So, typically, that is what has been done, is that it goes back into the center, since the center generated the revenues, but it's my understanding if the council chooses to utilize it for a different purpose, then that is allowable.
Okay, and so, and that's kind of, and I appreciate that, so, there's no emergency scenario where we need to do this now, to where it wouldn't be available for Councilman-elect Kenny to do, should he get in and say, okay, no, I agree, maybe that should go over here to do X, Y, Z? He would have the same ability in January, February, March of next year to bring this exact same item?
If that's the council's wishes.
If, I understand the council votes on it, but, but there would be no prohibition to that.
Not that I- Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. Councilman Hudson?
Angie, if you would come back, sorry. So, my question is about the item specifically. So, the item specifically says for building repairs and improvements in District 2. It doesn't specifically state the fire station.
Exactly.
And then when I look at the backup documentation, none of that specifically says how the money will be spent. So, to actually spend the money at the fire station, what needs to happen?
You would have to ask Joe. I, I wasn't in the conversations with the, you know, the actual building request that was made. I think Joe was looking into that.
So, at that point, it would, it would, do you think it would be the discretion of Building and Grounds Department head?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
But it would still have to follow all of our city parish, you know, rules. If it's a public works project, it would have to be bid, come to council, all that would still have to follow.
I see. Is there anybody here from the Scottlenville Area Foundation that can, that's it, that's all I have, Angie? Is there anybody here from the Scottlenville Area Foundation that can speak to us? Okay, Shawna, I said my, my, you're gonna go to the front? Please state your name and address to the record.
Shawna Banks, 1341 Balsam Avenue, board member for the Scottlenville Area Foundation. So, these, one of the things that-
Shawna, Ms. Banks, you didn't hear my question?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, my, my only question is, when folks came up from Scottlenville Area Foundation, questions were asked about fundraising and what they planned to do and at that time, they indicated that they were planning to raise the money.
Right.
So, my question is what happened to that?
Okay, so that plan is still in effect in our negotiations. First of all, we did not know that the, that these funds were available. However, when we looked at the previous CEAs where Louisiana, I mean, LASM, which has a non, is a nonprofit organization in the city parish, African American Museum, which is a city building with a nonprofit, and also Capital Area United Way, we discovered that all of those CEAs made the responsibility of doing the building with those agencies. However, the city parish has appropriated money to all of those expenses absent of their contributions. We have $150,000 that we have raised through the Scottlenville Area Foundation and in speaking, you know, we asked for, we told them we would match that if they would do the exterior, which is the, just to, you know, the roof, the, the windows, all those things, those are city parish expenses anyway. Much of the money that I have raised, they, that, the rental for the Jewel J. Newman Community Center was $250 when I got there. It's on, it's a mil, it's a $1,000. But what I'm saying is, so this is only to expedite the, putting it in commerce from which all of you said you wanted it to happen fast. So, this item is so forced it to happen fast.
All right, thank you.
So, we have a total of $300,000.
You answered my question. So, when you talk about the negotiations that took place, who took part in the negotiations?
In the negotiations with our assist, what is it, built assistant, I mean, our vice board member, Eric Porter, who has a construction company called Comment, because they knew, he knew how to run the numbers on what was needed for the building and myself, the parish attorney, finance, building and grounds, Dante, and Chief of Staff, all of those.
So, in the negotiations-
And Lisa, Lisa Smith with the parish attorney is the one-
Brandon.
-that drafted the CEA based on what they did, what the city has approved with the African American Museum, which is downtown, LASM, which is downtown, as well as Capital Area United Way, which is downtown.
Okay, so my, my question is, in the, in the negotiations, were you representing Scottlenville Area Foundation or are you representing the city parish or Jewel J. Newman?
I represented the council, as I do in elder District 2 matters whether I'm involved or not. I'm also, in my tenure here, I have served not only with the Capital Area Foundation, but with Scottlenville Westminster, the airport, Capital Area United Way, and planning and zoning. And so, what you know, as you know, and you were telling me you donated your funding to a nonprofit, I honestly didn't know that I could just donate all my money to a nonprofit. So, I put all the funds to the Jewel J. Newman Community Center and for full renovations of the entire building. We have a new kit, all new appliances in both the gym side, which I named Building B. I fully furnished and made a new kitchen in Building A. Each one of those have warranties on all their appliances.
I got you, thank you.
And if there's a need for, but those things will be taking place.
I appreciate it. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Anybody else?
Councilman Moe?
Yeah, can I have someone from the parish attorney's office come up, please?
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, thank you. So, what we're discussing here right now is $150,000 that is in the community center's fund balance. And what they're looking to do is take this $150,000, give it to Building and Grounds, Building and Grounds would then be instructed to fix the fire station that we signed a cooperative endeavor agreement with for an organization that was supposed to take care of the fire station. In the CEA, once we've signed that, who is responsible for that building according to the CEA and the steps and the, the things that they must do?
So, I am not familiar with this item, item four. I'm only familiar with cooperative endeavor agreement.
Okay, in the cooperative endeavor agreement-
Yes, sir, I'm gonna answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
In my opinion, this item is completely separate from the CEA because this item does not indicate that the $150,000 will be used for that purpose.
Well, okay, to, to make that germane to the topic, the councilwoman for the district, that is still the councilwoman, stated for the record that these funds would be used for this fire station.
Yes, sir, and I promise I'm gonna answer your question. I just, I'm trying to give some caveats so that I don't represent, misrepresent. So, as far as the CEA goes, my understanding was that Councilwoman Banks and her board were representing the Scottlenville Area Foundation and that the Buildings and Grounds was representing the city parish in those negotiations. In the CEA, there, it's joint. The city has agreed through Buildings and Grounds to do some repairs to the building and the, as we discussed, or I believe that you guys discussed when we discussed in pass the CEA at the last meeting, there are several, I guess, benchmarks that the Scottlenville Area Foundation has to make in certain periods of time. So, I mean, in my opinion, looking at the agreement, both the city and the Scottlenville Area Foundation are responsible for some of the repairs of that fire station. And again, I would point out that my understanding of this particular item is not that that $150,000 will go to that Scottlenville Area Foundation.
Okay, thank you. Just in closing, that, I guess, I brought this up several times before, what, what I feel we're looking to do with this here is take $150,000 that District 2 has amassed or whatever you want to call it in the fund balance, it's $150,000. I feel that if, if y'all's community center generates that revenue and income, it's for programs in that community center for your district, it's still for your district and everything and, and/or to fix those facilities so, so y'all don't have to come back to this council and ask for extra money and so on and so forth. And I get it, there's times where that is needed and Councilman Hearst, I know we joke with you about the thing, we all pass it and so on, but here we are, this, this hitting $30,000, this is $150,000 to be cleared out of the next councilman's budget to be used, what I think is a specific project. Yes, it's in the community, but it's not a specific thing to that project. I, I would love 150, I would love to be able to generate $150,000 in my district to be able to do general projects also. Therefore, I will second the motion, Councilman Hearst, if nobody else has yet to deny.
Okay, so that would be a motion to delete, only appropriate if we have a second to the original motion, to have a substitute motion. So, right now, we have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Banks. Do we have a second on the motion to approve? Seeing none, motion fails. Are there any other motions? We have a motion to defer to January 8th by Councilwoman Banks. Do we have a second? Motion fails. Any other motions? Hi, Chris?
Do you wanna do breakfast? Huh? Do you wanna do breakfast today? Oh, you got something to say? I'll do it. What's going on? You got the days off? So, what you were waiting for? They did, they did. Yeah, yeah. I just got a drink and stayed out of trouble. Okay, wish for a nice-